Hey, Nat. Welcome. Um, we're using Zoom in this meeting, which allows the chair, which allows the public to participate in the meeting as an attendee. The chair can request members of the public to provide their names for the purpose of keeping accurate minutes. For the meeting, attendees must register to participate. The registration link is unique. The registration link can be found in the description, Nantucket Government TV YouTube feed for the meeting. Attendees will join in listening mode and can can click the raise hand button if they wish to speak. The chair will call on those who have raised their hands before they were raised. All questions should be directed through the chair. As a preliminary matter, this is, I am David Irish, and the Chair of Nantucket Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
And we have two alternates present, John Kitchen. And Welch.
Yeah.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Uh, Leslie Snell.
Here.
Megan Trudell.
Here.
Catherine Ancearo.
Here.
And Billy Saad.
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, well, we don't really have those. Please remember to speak, no skipping pages. Um. I hate this thing. Hmm, good morning. This is the open meeting of the Nantucket Planning Board for September 26th. Please ensure ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment, correct?
That's correct.
Um, what? Will we have public comment when we talk about the um anticipated ATM articles?
No, the intention for this um agenda item is really to have a very preliminary conversation as a board. Um, for what articles we should be.
And the public will be.
The board wants to move forward.
And.
Yeah, there'll be opportunity for public participation at a later time.
Perfect, um. Please know the meeting is being recorded, that all attendees are participating by video conference. Um accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recordings. All supporting materials have been provided. Members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along and use the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Um, we're turning to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules in effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Um, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. They will provide remarks. The chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair. Thank you. Onto the agenda. Um. I would uh entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Don't move, sir.
Second.
Uh, my motion made by Barry, second by Joe, Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Um, first item on the agenda is to review motions and draft comments for special town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chair, in your packet you have uh the motions for Article Two and Article Five. Those are the two zoning articles that are on the warrant for the special town meeting. As usual, we've provided the motion to you so you can review in advance and make sure it's actually what you voted and intended to move forward. And we've prepared a draft comment, which you see on the screen in highlight for Article Two. This is something that you've not discussed yet. I mean, it generally captures your discussion at the meeting. But we would like for you to review that and uh agree to include that in the warrant or not, or make changes to it. So I'll just read the comment real quick. Um, the board notes the significant discussion of issues by the short term rental work group over the course of many months. Adding short term rental to the use chart will remove any ambiguity regarding whether the use is allowed use or not. And will remove the uncertainty that has recently affected property owners. Passing the regulations proposed in Article One are an important component of the board's support for this zoning amendment. As presented, even if the use is allowed by zoning, it cannot take place without strict compliance to the existing and proposed regulations in Chapter 123 of the Town Code. Uh. And actually, as I'm reading that out loud, that last sentence may need a little work.
I mean, I think that the 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 message is good and if you tune it, um, board members. Thoughts, concerns? Good job by Leslie as usual.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
So do we, we need to uh vote on this, Leslie?
Yes, please vote to include that in the warrant as your comment.
So I'd entertain a motion, please.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, second by Nat, Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay.
Uh, we did not draft a comment for Article Five. That one's very straightforward. But if you would like a comment, we can put one in, but we usually don't unless there's some explanation needed.
I I'm Barry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion at this point that is that we adopt the article as now. For to uh special time meeting.
Great. I have a second.
Second.
Delayed reaction. Uh, great. Motion made by Barry, second by Nat, I believe. Uh, Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Great.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, I would just like to point out that um for the comment that the board voted on to send to the Finance Committee for Article One. Um, at the last minute, I did have to make a minor change to your suggestion and it went over with the chair. Um, the language that you all talked about relative to certificates of occupancy didn't necessarily capture, I think, what you wanted to do because there are structures that do not have certificates of occupancy and are not eligible for them because they were built before the enactment of the state building code. So I built in some language to address those units. So it didn't change uh the intent of your vote, but it did clarify on what would be eligible.
Okay, great. Um, that wasn't in our packet though, right? Was it?
That was not in your packet because it wasn't for discussion. But if we didn't get that to you, I can send it out to you separately.
Okay, I I think I've seen it, but if you could just send it again, so it's on top of my.
It was, yeah, it was time sensitive and it had to go off to the FinCom.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you. Um, so we are on to master plan discussion. Oh, you're muted. Leslie.
There we go, unmuted. Um, as you all know, the master plan was last pleaded in 2009. Uh, so it's been a little over 10 years. It was meant to be, you know, a plan that lasted longer than that, as indicated in the implementation section of the master plan. We've been working on implementing um various aspects of that since 2009. Um, most recently, we've been waiting on an update from the Decennial Census, which was delayed because of COVID and then further delayed. Um, so we haven't kicked off, you know, a formal start to updating the master plan, but we have been working on things internally. Um, at this point, it's time that we engage with a consultant to help us move that forward. We have funding available to do that. Um, funding was approved through the budget process for two years in a row. Uh, so we have that in our professional services budget. We also have money that we can use through the NPDC um DLTA funding that's meant to um assist the local communities that are part of the regional planning agency with their planning efforts. So that's totally appropriate for us to use um for the town of Nantucket. Master plan, so uh funding's not an issue here. We've talked with Judy Barrett, Barrett Consulting. She's done a lot of work on Nantucket. She's very familiar with our community, our demographics. And I think she's a logical person to engage in helping us um finalize the completion of the master plan in front of you. You know, she has a lot of different tasks in her scope of services. I'm part of it's, you know, mobilizing, getting prepared, meeting with town staff and uh various elected boards and committees as needed, reviewing prior plans, inventory and assessment of, you know, what we've already completed, our current demographics and that sort of thing. Identifying planning issues, working with the community to identify goals and policies, implementation, and then submitting the final master plan. I mean, one thing that I think is really important to note in here is Task Seven, which is community engagement. We want to make sure that the community, you know, is engaged to the extent possible that they have every opportunity to participate in the master plan. It's important, you know, for our community that uh we hear from everyone to the extent that, you know, people participate. Um, so I would like for the board to you know, provide any comments that you have on this. And then I would like for your endorsement to have this board um execute a contract to to get this project started.
Leslie, does this have to go to the select board for approval? On the funding.
They vote on the contract.
On the contract, okay.
Uh, so they don't necessarily vote on the scope of services and all of that, but they do have to approve the contract.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, board members, questions, thoughts? Bear, uh Nat, I'm sorry.
Just, yeah, just a quick comment. I I ran over this when you sent it out, Leslie and Megan. Um, I think it makes total sense to engage um Judy and her team because of what you said, but like this is like when we have like Weston and Sampson, we have these consultants that have already worked here for a considerable number of years. It is really important that we find ways to do that. Because they're starting from scratch again if we don't hire people that have already been here. This place is getting more and more complicated. And if they already know what they're doing with something, it doesn't have to be completely related to exactly this scope to figure it all out. This is a huge advantage and probably saves us a lot of money. So I'm totally in favor of it. I just wanted to make that point. Because this comes up with Mike, it comes up with the town, it comes up with various projects that happen and they're gonna continue. So thank you.
Great, good points, Nat. Barry?
Yeah, I just want to concur with Nat. Everything you said, Nat, was spot on at this point. The other thing is, when it comes to public engagement as well, I think Mike, when he was doing some of his transportation surveys, found some wonderful ways to start dealing with that that we've never really entertained before. So whatever we can capitalize off of from from his experiences, I think will help in terms of our public outreach when we wind up doing this as well, too.
Great, uh, Leslie.
Yeah, and to that point, um, Mike did meet with Judy and Megan and me, and he's been talking with her on the side about some additional community engagement ideas that he has using some of the the programs that he used for the long range transportation plan and other ideas that he brought back with him from Houston.
Yeah. Very.
Yeah, so again, you know, some of the things that we learned like about how to do multi multilingual surveys and stuff, I think will will go a long way towards some of the things we're doing. Um, but that's great. I'm thrilled with that. Thanks.
I I agree this, the the more we can bring in the public to this, the stronger document we're gonna have in the end, I believe. Um, John.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. I have a few comments. I I don't think I should go through them today, though. Um, I don't want to waste everybody's time, but you know, coming sort of fresh off the short term rental work group and, you know, our consultant experiences, um, I do have some sort of pointers that might be useful to staff uh and the board as we go forward. But it would probably be better for me just to document them rather than try to go through them today. If you feel that they would be useful, but it's, everything is fresh in my mind from that that uh that effort, so.
And and Judy was there during that effort.
Yes, she was, yes.
Yeah, if you, I I think I, if you want to um write them down and send them to staff and have them distribute them to us, I think that that would be great. Um. You know, I think today we're looking just to to approve the scope of services and and move this to the next next level, which I think is the select board for their approval, so.
Okay, I'll do that um in the next couple of days.
Great, thank you, John. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion then, Barry?
Yeah, I'll make that motion at this point that um we endorse whatever contracts are necessary to carry this forward and uh work with concepts that have been put forward to us today to advance the next generation of the master plan.
Well, second.
All right, motion made by Barry, second by Nat, Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Um, okay, on to the um ATM 2024 concepts.
Yep.
All right, so like we do every year, we have a very long list of concepts. Um, so please don't expect for all of these to be on the warrant. These are ideas that uh some have moved forward from prior years, some are new for this year. Um, all of them are either directly related to implementation of the master plan or they're related, or they're just addressing issues that have come up over the past year or so. Um, so I won't go through them all one by one, but um the map changes, those are mostly consistent with master plan. The R1 phase out, that's in the master plan, our C2 phase out is in the master plan. Um, the R10 to R10L, that's a correction to a prior town meeting vote. Um, the R20 to CN at Robert Somerset, um, that's a concept that's not fully ready for discussion right now, but it's just on the list, so we don't forget. Um, and the bylaw, Megan, can you scroll down? The bylaw changes, um, we've had different issues come up over the years with flex developments and getting uh the conservation restriction adopted by the appropriate agency. So the idea here is maybe that could be waived when there's an affordability component. I mean, the open space would still need to be preserved, but maybe we could change the way that's handled. Uh, CMI, at one point, town meeting had approved a height allowance up to 40 feet by right. Without approving any projects that actually demonstrated how that would work. Uh, it was later voted to reduce the 40 feet back down to, I think, 35 with 38 by special permit or something like that. Again, it hasn't been utilized. Uh, but the idea here is to allow a higher height back up to the 40 feet when there's an affordability component. So if 10% of the units are affordable, then that may kick in. So again, just a concept. Um, also with apartments and apartment buildings, uh, coming up with the density increase when a minimum of 25% are affordable. You know, if 25% are affordable, that would make them eligible to be on the subsidized housing inventory list, depending on the specifics of the project, but that's an important threshold to keep in mind. Both of these concepts, the the increased height and the density increase came out of a housing forum that Megan participated in that was sponsored by Housing Nantucket. It's part of a conversation that we've been having with their executive director, you know, how can we how can we encourage more affordable units being produced in uh smaller projects? So so those are some ideas that we have. Um, the MMD, right now, the any MMD special permits are issued by the planning board, as you all are very well aware. Um, it might be a good idea to move that to the zoning board. The the planning board has a lot of business to do. A lot of it's subdivision and commercial related. Uh, MMD issues, I think, are more closely linked to the types of neighbor to neighbor issues that the zoning board is used to dealing with. So that's something for you all to consider. Uh, prohibiting large swimming pools in the MMD. Swimming pools in the MMD have been a topic of discussion for a while now. That just recently sort of came to a head. So it it seems like the the direction of the board may be to just prohibit those. So it's clear to everyone what the expectation is, but that's again for you all to discuss. Um, technical amendments. We have just language updates that are are technical in nature and may actually not even need a town meeting vote. That's in Article 12. Uh, or excuse me, in Section 12, and you did?
Oh.
And and that would be, can you all still hear me? I'm getting a microphone error message on.
You dropped out for a sec there. If you could repeat.
Um, okay, I'll start back at the top. So Section 12 and technical amendments. Um, that's just a technical update from where prior sections were updated and the section updates didn't carry through. Uh, so in Section Two, update apartment buildings to be three or more units. Uh, we've discovered there's a discrepancy in some of our definitions between what is only one unit, what's two units or and what's three or more units. Um, so that's something that I think needs to be addressed. Um, so we don't have one unit apartments that are really just single family dwellings and districts where single family dwellings aren't allowed defeats the purpose. Um, Section Two also, um, this relates to tertiary dwellings. Right now, uh, they have a maximum ground cover of 650 square feet, but a gross floor area allowance of 900. So the thought is maybe just move it all to 900. Just so there's not so many numbers involved and 900 is not that much larger than 650. And again, it would be covered by the overall ground cover allowance for the lot anyway. Um, in Section Two and in Section 16, there's kind of a quirky requirement for front yards only in the R1 and RC2 districts. Um, this is, I think, a relic of the past and no one really understands why that's still in the bylaw. So uh the proposal here would be to remove that so that you have a front yard setback and a side yard setback, not two front yard setbacks if you have a corner lot. Hmm. And then again, in Section 12, that's just more um section references that need to be updated. Uh, at the bottom, um, the STR outcome, I think that can be removed. That was an early issue that I think has been resolved.
Okay.
Um, we are working on right now an update to the streets and sidewalks section of the bylaw, which is really minor. Um, there's just an old map reference in there. And Holly may be working on something for the HDC. I don't think that's going to come forward. And then staff will of course be assisting the select board as needed with any real estate articles and sewer articles and those types of things that we traditionally assist with as requested.
Great, thank you. Leslie said, do you want us to just go down the list one by one? Have a discussion.
Uh, you 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 can do that if you want. Um, you know, primarily, I wanted you all to know what we have on our list to see if you have things that you want to add at this point. Um, generally around this time, we provide the list to the select board just so they have an idea of what may be coming. Um, we don't really finalize it until maybe later October, early November. Um, I know there's some people um or from the public that are on here, so I just wanted to make an announcement while they're paying attention um that the citizen warrant is open until November 13th. So if if citizens have things that they want on the warrant, they need to get the signatures and submit that to the town clerk by November 13th.
Uh huh. Yeah. I'm I I and tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it's probably best to just go each one by one and and make sure that there's support from the board, and if there's not, then we can lay that rest for a little while and and work on the important things, so um. Let's just start with the map changes real quick. Um, I think these are the most straightforward. Um, R1 to R5 Hooper Hooper Farm Road. Um, how um? How does the board feel about that?
Mr. Chair, that's part of our ongoing plan anyways to move to R5.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I didn't even realize it would fill out one over there.
I'm sorry, I can't see everyone, so I'm a little hobbled here. Um. Um, so everyone basically supports that as the ongoing effort. Okay.
Yeah.
And actually, on that one, we may want to consider R5L. Okay, which has a little bit lower ground cover and doesn't allow duplexes. So depending on, you know, we always do research of the properties, we see what uses are there now, what the ground cover is now, and try to pick a district that's most comparable to what currently exists so that the character of the neighborhood's not significantly altered or that a lot of nonconformities are created.
Okay, perfect. So but that that's something we'll discuss at a later meeting after we've all agreed on what should stay and what should go, right?
Yes.
So Leslie, can can I just make some ma- mention one thing, Mr. Chair, just for others that don't know? The R1 doesn't allow a covenant. And it's a key that these get switched, and even if it's R5 Limited, it still allows that covenant process to happen, right, Leslie?
Yes.
And I don't think you're gonna, can you have a tertiary in R1?
No.
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 Great, so I I get the feeling that the board supports this.
Yeah.
For further discussion, right. Uh, R20 to CN, 25 Roberts, 10 Somerset, 14 Somerset.
Steve, this one might be premature for discussion. I would suggest removing it from the list. I was working with some of the property owners and I don't think they're all on the same page yet to move this forward.
That's the NIR, University of Florida, and the Affording.
Yeah, and the Affordable Housing Trust, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that. Um. R10 to R10L, nobody or way, this is uh this is that redo, right? Housekeeping?
Yeah.
Correct, so that that moves on. Um. RC2 to C-Tech, which is the continued um trying to rid ourselves of RC2, correct?
Yeah, a- and this particular one, the property owners were included in a zoning article last year.
Right.
Um, one of them was just about to pull permits that would have not been able to move forward if they were rezoned, so we agreed to give them a little extra time. So this one may or may not be ready to move forward again, but I think it's just three properties.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And that would close the loop out there of phasing out all the RC2 in that neighborhood.
Great. Um, RC2 to CMI or C-Tech at 43 Nobodyer Farm Road.
Uh, sort of the same story out at 43 Nobodyer Farm Road.
Okay. Um, RC2 to question market, 485052 Surfside Road.
I think this one's probably not ready to move forward.
Okay, so we'll hold that off. Um. RC2, R5 or CN at 61 Surfside into My Comet Ave. And that's over by Miles's, by the new pump station, right?
It's across the street, Megan?
It's across the street on the on the corner.
Okay. And this is again in the master plan, basically getting getting rid of RC2.
Right.
Great, all right, so that stays. Um. RC2 to question mark Rosebud, Hidden Dale Forest.
This is one that we've been working on with the neighbors for and or the not the neighbors, the property owners for an extended period of time and haven't made any significant headway, so. I'm not sure if maybe some of the recent projects in the area have motivated them to work with the planning board Work with the planning board or or not, but we're going to reach out to the attorney that. Generally represents the family. To see what the feeling is.
Great. Can I, uh, Mr. Chairman, can I just make another comment? Leslie, thank you for saying what you just said. We can't have. More of what happened with that. Public hearing process than the. The family members got to understand. That. If that, it can't just get left in RC two just because it was. And just hope for the best type of thing. There there has to be. I think it needs a mix. I don't know, C tech and CN, I'm not sure. What you guys have even talked about, but there needs to be a real clean way to. Allow the right things to materialize on their own in that property.
Hmm.
You know, it's. It's uh reminds me of of a little bit of the three M situation in two thousand and eight nine, a little bit.
Hmm.
Something has to change. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Nat. Um. And then we're we're holding off on the on the RC two at Somerset and Raceway, correct? Is that not ready?
Let's hold off on that.
Okay, all right, great. So on to bylaw changes. First one, flex development, ability of planning board to grant. A waiver of the CR when it is an affordable. Component to the development. I mean, I think this is again, like many of these, going down the road of supporting affordable or more housing. Um. Everyone good with that to stay in?
Hmm.
Yep.
Great. Um. CMI forty foot allowed by right when ten percent. Which I would argue should be much higher when ten percent of the project is affordable. So I think. This is a good one for some discussion.
Yeah.
Maybe, or just or just everyone agrees that it's something we should pursue and and we can. We can work out the details at a. Further meeting.
Hmm.
Agreed. Can I just, one comment, just for the people like. People like Joe that are listening and Steve that's on. Leslie, what? Have we had a conversation? About. What height allows for a reasonable? Third floor. Thirty four, thirty five, you know, what is the number? So that we don't get caught in this forty number as like the world's come to an end. Kind of thing where we. Find that number. That allows for a good project to work for the third floor. You know, I call it two and three, two and a three quarter floor building instead of three, you know, like they have a story and a half. You know, kind of situation. So I think that that needs to be. Sort of part of this conversation. Just my. You know, sort of perceptiony glasses on with how people think about the number forty versus something slightly less than that.
And I could work on that. I could do a section. You know, the typical width of a building downtown and what, you know, the parameters of base they would want. And then, you know, create that section. Dorm is on the, you know, third floor and how that would work. Uh, you know, I mean, when to really look at it now is probably Sparks Ave. You know, that project.
Hmm.
Yeah, great. I I think. That's a good point, Nat, and and I think that information would definitely be helpful in in. Us making our decision in public.
Right.
According to. So.
Yep.
Um, so that one's gonna continue on. Anyone have any other comments on it?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Um, yeah, the other component of that, I think Joe touched on it indirectly is. Not just uh Matt's comment with respect to what goes on inside, but the. Um, length and the width of the structure, so more of the width or the depth, which creates the roof pitch. And I think what might be helpful is. You know, if we're gonna go down the the route of doing numbers and looking at some structures as examples, is maybe even throwing out there um. An option where. Fifty percent. Of the ground cover could be a certain height. Um, and if it was, you know, le- less of the ground cover, it could even be higher. So the idea is you're basically trying to, with our messaging and with our code, and I'm not sure, you know, it's gonna take, would take a little bit of of thought and development, but the idea is that. With messaging and the zoning bylaw, you are trying to facilitate additive massing. Which is consistent with what the HDC picks up. And then for the experience of the applicant, they're going through a system that has a like kind. Up uh and result. Um, so I'm not suggesting we take away anything. I'm just suggesting that we might look at it as there could be a benefit. In certain instances. Um, that relate to how you decide to divvy up your building. And not suggesting the planning board gets involved in that, other than maybe some language and some extra bonuses.
Great, that's good thought, Stephen. Thank you. Um, okay, so it seems like we all agree that that there's work to be done there and that should continue on. Um, apartment buildings. Apartments and apartment building density increase where there's a minimum of twenty five percent affordability, subject to planning board review and special permit. Um. Uh, again, I think that this is um. Supporting the goal of more more housing and more affordable housing. Um, so I I think we should definitely keep that in there. Um, how's how's everyone else feel?
Hmm.
I agree.
Okay, great. So that one stays as well. Um. Um, so these next two, I guess, um, the question is, is is if we go down the path of the second to prohibit that. Um, are we looking for a straight out ban or hot tubs? And and the only reason I say that is because. Do we, would we, if the board wants to ban them, do we really need to move it to the to the ZBA? Um, Barry?
Yeah, no, I I've talked with staff about this. I think it's pretty move that we begin to uh. Allow the ZBA to focus on MMD special permits. Um, but consequently as well, I I think that. Uh, with the length of what we went through in our last few meetings. About the one particular pool out of the MI MMD, I think it'd be the prohibition. Makes sense probably across the board, not just with large residential swimming pools, but with um. Even smaller things and and hot tubs out there as well, too. I mean, I certainly like a little feedback from the ZBA. Um. But above beyond that, I think these these two things are important to track through and follow with.
I I.
You know.
To Barry.
Um, yeah, and and truthfully, we don't get a lot of MMD, especially uh special permits anyway, so. You know, and if it doesn't work well, we can always take it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um. I, since I've intermingled these both, does everyone agree that these should move forward for further discussion? Take that as a yes.
Hmm.
Um. Does, I'm gonna take the technical amendments as a as a bunch. Does anyone have any issue with any of those? No. Okay. So, um.
Can we just go back to the MMD for a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I I have mentioned this just in passing to the chairwoman of. ZBA, but they have not had. A um board discussion about it, but we can certainly put it on for their October twelfth.
Hmm.
Agenda to to get some feedback.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Hot potato.
Take it at once, but Leslie?
Uh, maybe afterwards.
Depending on her answer. Um, okay, great. Um. We don't have to worry about the. Yeah, um hotels, units in the STM. Um. And then bylaw update for one twenty seven twenty A to reference the appropriate map. That's pretty straightforward, correct?
And and just on that one, that that references the town and country overlay district map.
Okay.
Uh, but it references one from about two thousand two instead of the current one, so.
Okay.
It's important that that's. Updated because the roadway improvements that are either. Allowed or prohibited or allowed through some exemption are all tied directly to that map.
Okay. Great.
Hmm.
Um, I think everyone, everyone's good with that, correct? So that that moves on. Um. Then Holly and HDC, I guess that's to be determined.
That's an HDC matter and um. It's been on the list for a while, so we'll see how that progresses.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um. That seems to be it unless someone else has some more comments or questions. No? I would. It feels wrong. Hour in, like, this is not right.
Hmm.
Uh, but I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe Barry.
Hi.
Oh.
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you later.
Staff, have a great day.